...their meeting in the public county minister. Please rise from up at the top of the chair, all by the flag of the nation's flag. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any further comments?
Yes, sir, we have two people signed in for the public comment. I'd like to remind the speakers to please state your name and your municipality of residence, and we'll give you three minutes to speak. First is Peggy Abelson.
My name is Peggy Abelson, Middle States Township. This is on behalf of Commissioner Exine this morning. Contemplating the sale of Sunnyview is a rationalization used by Commissioners McCaryer and Pinkerton. Contemplating means thinking about something seriously and at length to understand it more fully. This process erupted in an abrupt manner. On October 23rd Chairman McCaryer stated he unilaterally contacted the firm to market Sunnyview. November 7th Commissioner McCaryer and Pinkerton voted to send RFPs to prospective buyers with the December 13th response date. Only 51 days with no written consulting appraisals required by county code prior to the RFPs. Actions speak louder than words. Stop their actions, make your voices heard. Voters chose Sunnyview in 1898. The Sunnyview name reflects the heartfelt family atmosphere residents and employees call home on a daily basis. Many taxpayers believe the sale of a multimillion dollar asset in conjunction with incurred $20 million in further debt should be decided by binding voter referendum, not by two individuals who should have made it public during their campaigns. Commissioners McCaryer and Pinkerton stated there are requirements for prospective buyers. The RFP purchase specifications are posted in full on Commissioner Exine's web page. The timeframe in the specifications is only 10 years. Compassion and caring cannot be mandated. Commissioner Exine was provided a marketing memorandum setting forth Sunnyview's potential performance if owned operated by a private for-profit group. As written in the derived analysis, the subject property is shown generating over 18.7 million of net revenue and over 16.5 million of operating expense, resulting in over 2.2 million earnings before interest, taxes, depreciation, amortization. Over 2.2 million in revenue. Why aren't Commissioners McCaryer and Pinkerton pursuing this revenue option? Why isn't a consulting report obtained? With this potential revenue, Sunnyview should remain a future asset to benefit taxpayers. The county provides general fund contributions to many entities. 2012 contributions total over $5.7 million and 2013 over $5.9 million. Sunnyview provides a vital community service. Recipients of county contribution should share with union concessions to keep Sunnyview. Commissioner Exine wants to keep Sunnyview county-owned and move it into a productive and shining future. Unless you make your voices heard, 2013 will be another historic year for the wrong reason, the sale of Sunnyview. Abraham Lincoln in his Gettysburg Address recognized the selfless acts of those who sacrificed their lives to the importance of government of the people, by the people, and for the people. This belief and fundamental premise has lost all meaning in Butler County Government.
Mark Podnitsky.
I'm Mark.
I want to make sure it's Martin. Martin.
Think you could hear the opposite view of Sunnyview right now? First I want to talk about unemployment insurance. I was surprised, my brother came across this, that we had a, one of our employees fell with a drug test. You cannot get unemployment if you fail a drug test. I didn't think there was any reason you couldn't get unemployment. So, I was happy about that. I don't want to talk about too much because you're investigating, but I was one of the persons selected for jury commission or jury duty on Friday, which I had no problem with. No problem at all. Apparently I wasn't randomly selected. I, the reason I don't like that was, not that I would have to do it, I don't mind that at all. I just, one of, one of the basics of our law is that you get a jury of your peers. And somebody tampering with that jury poll is not a jury of your peers. I just don't feel that was right. Sunnyview, I was running yesterday, I run with a friend now from these floors up here, he works in the building. Came back and I saw Commissioner Exine's truck. I was, I don't, I won't say what's on the side of it, but I was greatly disturbed by what was on the negative comment that Commissioner McCaryer and Pinkerton, and I think he forgot about Commissioner McCaryer because he added a sign afterwards. Listen, Sunnyview, it's been too long. It's been a game with the unions and the politicians, and this, this happens everywhere. Detroit's in bankruptcy because of this. They just get together, the union gets you elected, and the politicians pay off the unions. And that's just not right. Who's left to hold the bag? The taxpayers. And I'm proud of Commissioners McCaryer and Pinkerton, they've stood up to the union. They've said enough is enough. That's it, that's enough. Thank you guys.
I'd like to say this on that. The unions, let's make this very clear. No union brought me elected. The unions supported my other candidates. Whatever the other candidate that ran against me. I was not supported by any union. I didn't take any donations from any union. I didn't have hardly any union supporters. In fact, the Sunnyview union didn't support me either. I'm doing this because I think it's right. The Sunnyview union did not support me, let's make that clear. I'm doing this for my values and my morality. I can guarantee you, I ran, I didn't accept any contributions over $150, and if you think you can buy me for $150, you're, you know, you're from another planet. So, I just want to make that clear. I took no special interest money, no union supported me. That is categorically false. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else?
That's all for public comment, sir.
Okay, we have minutes from our November 18th and our November 20th meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second to the motion to approve it?
I'll second that.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you. Old business, we do have an item for old business commissioners. This was tabled for the November 20th meeting. This is approval of a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for funds with the DCED on behalf of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority of County of Butler for the North Central Butler County Owner Occupied Rehabilitation Impact Program. They are applying for a maximum grant amount of $500,000. We'd like your approval, please.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried.
We have no proclamations or certificates this morning. Moving on to new business. Under Emergency Services, on behalf of Steve Vice House, who is in training today, we're asking your approval to renew the existing lease contract with Crown Castle for five radio tower sites. Determine the contract is five years at $1,250.18 per month per tower site with a 3% annual increase. We'd like your approval.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
The next item is approval of a maintenance agreement with SBM Electronics. This is for the 911 voice recording system. The term of the contract is one year at the amount of $3,040. We ask your approval.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
I'd just like to thank Amy for getting back to me with the information on it. We had some questions Monday and she answered them, so I'm for this, okay?
Okay, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Next, under Information Technology, Bob Boyer.
I'm asking for permission to enter into a contract that the Infocom Corporation provides backup, backup support for image files. Currently, the voluntary court's image files are kept at within Infocom. What they have offered us is they want to go into backup mode and we'll move the images here to Butler. What that does is that makes us the primary responsibility in making sure they're okay and in the event of, Infocom will back them up as a secondary. And we have our own backup, so it's a much more protective environment. The cost currently is about $2,000 a month. New costs are behind 150 months, so it's about $40,000 a year. So, I'm asking for approval of that.
I'll make the motion. I'll second that.
Discussion? I have your party of savings for this one. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
First item under Commissioners, we're asking your approval of appraisal services for the Sunnyview property. And I'll turn this over to Solicitor English for further explanation.
As we discussed at the agenda setting meeting, we received two proposals to conduct this appraisal, one of them at $8,000 and the second one at $6,000. The $6,000 is for integral realty resources. I think they would both be qualified. It's a unique asset to appraise and it was very difficult finding people who would even be willing to submit a proposal. I think that given that they're both qualified, one is $6,000 cheaper, my recommendation would be to retain integral realty resources for this purpose.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we do the $6,000.
And the proposal they gave us has one signature line. I would ask that the motion include authorization for the chairman to execute the agreement.
Include that in the motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
The next item, we're seeking your approval of the Retirement Board's recommendation to engage the Hay Group for an actuarial study to determine the pension liability in the event of the sale of Sunnyview. And the amount of that study would be $35,000.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Next, we'd like your approval to renew a service agreement with Inserta Code as the county's third-party administrator for workers' compensation. And here, if there are any questions, this is Lori Altman.
I'll make the motion. I'll second that.
Discussion, this is for our public information, due to the fact that we are self-funded under one of these talks, so we have to have a third-party company to administer it for us. Okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Next, we're asking for the ratification of a gas sales agreement, and this is to assign the existing agreement we have, that currently exists with PA Gas Marketing LLC. Their contracts are being sold to EQT Energy. This is part of a transaction in which Peoples Natural Gas Company is acquiring the distribution assets of the Equitable Gas Company, and therefore this contract will now be with EQT Energy. Gentlemen, I'd like your approval to ratify this.
It doesn't change the value.
That is correct.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
And I just wanted to say, this is for all the buildings in the county.
Not, not all the buildings in the county, all the ones in the Butler area. Some of them, for instance, Shakur, the outlawed ones might be a different yes.
No, okay, I'm involved in, right, okay, Sunnyview, okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Next, we're seeking your approval of a reauthorization of funds from the Affordable Housing deeds fee fund, which is Act 137. This is for the county's emergency repair program. The reauthorization is in the amount of $50,000 and includes approval to increase individual grant amounts from $2,500 to $3,500. We ask your approval.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Next, we have two items related to the Cranberry Magisterial District Justice Office Project. The first is approval of a consulting agreement with Pedersen &amp; Pedersen for surveying services in the amount of $681. We ask your approval.
I'll make the motion. I'll second that.
Discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
The next is an item that we added late yesterday. This is approval of a recommendation for geotechnical services, and I'll turn this over to Solicitor English for explanation.
Yes, the architect that the county retained on this project developed an RFP for the geotechnical services that are necessary to take a look at the ground and make sure that it can support the type of building it's been designed. The proposal that is before you for construction engineering consultants was the lowest, lowest bidder. They have recommended that the county retain them, and I would concur in that recommendation.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? And again, this is for the DJ's office.
The Cranberry, yes.
Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Next, we'd like your approval of an addendum to our existing contract with Mar Dusel. This is to provide auditing services for the county's transportation programs for fiscal years 2013 and 2014 in the amount of $6,100. We ask your approval.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Last item, Commissioners, I'd like to announce the special meetings that are scheduled for the presentation, public display, and adoption of the 2014 county budget. The presentation will take place on Tuesday, December 10th, 2013, at 10:00 a.m. in the public meeting room here. Public inspection will commence for a period of at least 20 days. That begins December 10th in the reception area of the county commissioner's office on the fifth floor of the Butler County Government Center during regular business hours, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. Anyone from the public is welcome to come to our offices to inspect the proposed budget. Also, we will have it available on the county's website at www.co.butterler.paa.us and at other locations as announced. And then the adoption of the budget is scheduled for a public meeting on Tuesday, December 31st, 2013, at 10:00 a.m. in the public meeting room. And that's all I have.
We have a motion to adopt these extra meetings?
No, sir, that's just an announcement of those meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Commissioners, if I may, on the matter for the Cranberry District Justice Project, the geotechnical services, these documents just came in this morning, and as a matter of fact, just minutes ago, I'd reviewed them already online, but I see here that they broke it into the construction engineering consultants contract is in two separate documents, and I just wanted to make sure that the board understood that the geotechnical is in one and then the testing and inspection services is in another. And perhaps we should have a motion to approve construction and engineering consultants for the testing inspection services as well, to be sure that the record accurately reflects that these were both approved by the board.
Wouldn't all of those items be construed to be under geotechnical services?
They, they were not included in the geotechnical proposal, which is the reason for the separate document.
What was the one that we voted on?
The one you voted on was, was just the, would be the geotechnical examination, and then the second one is unit rates to perform testing inspection services for additional site work beyond the scope of the geotechnical investigation.
So, what we voted on was just analysis of the core.
The, the borings and such like that.
I mean, that's the second part.
No, that's what was, that's what, that's what I believe the motion as framed approved. The second part was, was not included. I thought they would all be wrapped into one, but in looking at the documents as they came.
Well, the one we approved would be the second part, the first part would be the actual boring and...
No, that's what you approved, I believe. The boring part. You approved the AIA document for the geotechnical research, the, where they would bore and do the sampling and things like that. And then the second part is a quote for testing inspection services, soils technician, I'm just, I'm just looking at, if you don't have copies of this, I can get it to you. We can round robin this if you'd like to, and then approve it later. I don't have trouble with it.
How much did it cost in the second part?
It's, they're unit rates, so there's not a flat, there's not a total number involved. I can get an estimate if you would like.
I've got a problem, it's still we have the chance.
That's fine. These things just came in this morning, and I'd rather have this discussion now than not be sure.
Oh, I'm glad you caught that.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
There's no problem with that. All right. A motion to approve the budgetary transfers? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
A motion to approve the new hires?
Excuse me? We need to vote on that motion.
Oh, okay. Okay. We're moving, we're moving the best.
You're in the core samples. You're in the core samples.
Can we just do all these and just open them up?
I would recommend that you do them separately.
All right. All those in favor of approving the budgetary transfers, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. A motion to approve the new hires.
Some of them.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the travel requests?
Some of them.
Is there a second? I will second it. Discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. A motion to approve the requisitions.
Some of them.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. A motion to approve the check raised.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Report, Jim.
First of all, I'd like to comment, you know, they always suggest things on the positive, well, he had a positive field day with me in the last meeting, and after watching it, I watched it three times on YouTube, it's on the county website, on the county website. If you go on to Jim Exine on that and press on Jim Exine, the county website, and you go to YouTube, you get to see these on TV. It was very informative. And here, after watching the last public meeting several times on YouTube on the county's website, all I could think about was that we have a king and court jester running our county. We live in a representative democracy. What are they doing here and how did they arrive? Were they beamed down? Then I realized we were, they were just mean throwbacks from the 50s and 60s. I must be in a time warp, like George Wallace standing in the doorway of the University of Alabama defending segregation, or southern states demanding separate but equal schools, or white policeman beating Dr. King or Congressman John Lewis for participating in a peace march. We have Bill McCary and Dale Pinkerton 50 years later. Bill McCary and Dale Pinkerton have continually attacked me since I won election in 2011. I'm here with two old throwback party bosses from the 60s. Either you believe in their policies or go along with their agenda, or they and their political cronies will humiliate you, discredit you into submission. Guess what? I will not submit. These attacks include using lawyer friends and bottom feeders from the Butler Eagle, that's in management, Butler Eagle, to constantly involving me in litigation to suck the blood out of me. Dale Pinkerton's goal was to create a never-ending court case with his only goal to win by taking my personal residence and making my family homeless. Dale's plan of attack, along with his supporters in Butler County Common Pleas Court, have cost me over $50,000 in the last two years. If these attacks on me and my family weren't politically corrupt enough, now his team's goal is to take away the county's support system for the elderly, those with terminal medical conditions, and those with Alzheimer's and dementia, and their disabilities, and with those with disabilities. Look, it's one thing to go after me and my wife and children, but why go after the elderly, the disabled, and those county residents in the greatest need of support for our county's services? Those are not the Christian values I was brought up with, and these actions go against the moral fiber of the vast majority of our constituents. You two are not displaying the true Christian values but are worshiping an ideology not taught in our churches. Dale's quote of the week, "I don't know what I've done to Jim Exine over the last six years. I don't know what political trick Mr. Pinkerton hasn't pulled on me and Peggy over the last two years." Dale said Jim Exine doesn't like me. Dale was missing the whole point of good government. My job is not to dwell on individual likes and dislikes, but to do what the best for the community as a whole. My job is to be a responsible steward with our tax dollars and act on the majority of, for the majority of my constituents' issues and values. That's my goal. It should, it should be the goal of every elected official in our democracy. I spend no time or concern whether Mr. Pinkerton or Mr. McCaryer like me, nor will I. My main concern now is for my constituents is to keep Sunnyview county-owned. Sunnyview provides a vital necessarily service for the whole community. Sunnyview has been a self-generating $20 million budget. Over the last 10 years, it has averaged only a $400,000 loss per year, but it's outweighed because it provides a critical service to our elderly and their families. The approximate 200 acres of ground was purchased 100 years ago to support the sick and indigent in our county. Shouldn't at least half the money from the gas and mineral rights go back to Sunnyview? I say yes. McCary and Pinkerton say no. Is this not a diversion of funds from the original intended purpose of the property? I say it is a diversion. Mr. McCary and Mr. Pinkerton say it's not a diversion, and the county is in the business of farming and buying tracts of land for minimal procurement. Really? I didn't know that. Sunnyview Home is run and managed efficient. There's a big claim out there that Sunnyview Home is run and managed inefficiently, and that's why their loss is every year. That is categorically false. We have an excellent team of managers and employees at Sunnyview. Bill McCary, since I came to office, all he did was ever say, oh, we have the greatest employees ever, and then he just decides to arbitrarily terminate, in the middle of his term, he should have advertised before he ran. We have an excellent team of managers at Sunnyview. Why, why we lose money at Sunnyview is 20% of each employee's wages from a facility goes as an expenditure in the pension fund due to 2004 pension grab orchestrated in downtown Butler, averaging over $1 million more in operating expenses every year to Sunnyview's budget in the last decade. We wouldn't be running at a loss if it wasn't for the pensions. You know, Miss, McCary and Pinkerton's contention is that Sunnyview's service can be easily replaced by private or nonprofit enterprise. Anyone who thinks that is not toward the facility and has no idea of the level of care provided versus other facilities. Those who believe this propaganda are mainly rich arrogant idealists. They are the same group of people who believe those sleeping under bridge embankments in Pittsburgh love traffic noise, dirt, air pollution, and cold weather. They love the outdoors, that's why they're under the bridge embankments. Look, I could go on and on, but the bottom line is Butler County is one of the fastest-growing and prosperous counties in VA. Can the most fortunate among us spare $10 to $20 every year out of our county tax dollars for the elderly, our mentally challenged, and our disabled? I say we can afford it, and it's a privilege for me to do it. Bill McCary and Dale say we can afford it, and it's undesirable and not needed. I know that someday the person needing that care might be me or one of my family members. Sunnyview is not a burden on our county, but a shining star that I couldn't be more proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Well. I'm sorry Joyce Answorth isn't here today, but today I want to congratulate our Children and Youth Agency and Director Joyce Answorth on the outstanding results we've received as a result of the Title IV Equality Assurance Compliance Review that was conducted last month on the agency. As a result of all their hard work and dedication, our county did exceptionally well and achieved 100% compliance on each and every case that was reviewed. Folks, I cannot even begin to imagine the heart-wrenching issues that the workers in the office deal with every day. This agency running so efficiently can only be achieved through effective leadership and devoted employees. My hat's off to Joyce and her staff for a fantastic job, and we thank her and all her staff, and we know how hard those kids work on a day-to-day basis, out at night, in the middle of the night, and it's a very difficult job. So, thank you. I remind you, express that to her and we'll give her a copy. I'm sorry she wasn't here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. I too would like to spread a little kudos this morning. We had another audit yesterday, about a year or so ago, we decided that we wanted to go We decided that we wanted to go off the civil service and human services and go on to a merit-based hire system. Because the civil service program is cumbersome, you had to hire off the list, come out of Harrisburg, and we didn't always get the employees that we desired to hire. So, we went ahead, another county had done this, and we went ahead and started this program. It was a lot of work. The committee was headed, I think, by my assistant, Kim, and by Lori Altman, and by Carmine. And also serving in that committee was Joyce Anesworth, Beth Harold, Michelle Green, Diane Stevens, Grace Albersuzzi, and there's probably others.
Amy Wilson.
And Amy Wilson, I'm sorry. I don't know if I missed any.
This is going to take credit for them.
But anyway, this committee worked extremely hard, and they set up a program that is now the model for the state of Pennsylvania for counties wanting to want the merit hire system. Yesterday, they had their first audit. The auditors came and they said they would be here two days. They were gone in five hours because they said everything was perfect. The model that this committee had set up and the manuals and so forth were such that they wanted copies of them all so they could take them to other counties throughout the state. One other county in Pennsylvania did this at a cost of $60,000. We did it at a cost of nothing, with a lot of blood, sweat, and tears on the part of this committee and the employees of Butler County. So, this is a very great thing that we have employees that are willing to do this, and I hope those of you, Kim and Carmine and Lori, would get back and thank the rest of the committee that served on that. I would also like to speak to a few things. It's certainly not difficult to see why Commissioner Eckstein has not accomplished a lot in his two years. It's apparent that he must spend most of his time attempting to find fault with other employees and with other elected officials. And of course, his principal focus is on Dale and me. His meaningless, mindless diatribe seems to have no limits or no bounds when it comes to malicious, insulting, derogatory, and negative vectors regarding his fellow commissioners. To initiate his programs to slander against us, to print his unfounded and untrue newsletters, to paint his ridiculous signs on his truck would certainly require great portions of his time, time that should be better spent serving the people of Butler County as a county commissioner. Oh, well, if that's the way he wants to spend the taxpayers' money, so be it. Okay. Conference time with the media. Kayla?
Sure. This is for Commissioner Eckstein. Why did you vote against the travel request?
Too high room rates on a couple of them.
I'm sorry?
High room rates. We still have a problem with room rates. People go in at $200 a night. They're approving and I'm not. Okay? So, I disapprove of that.
Is it for anybody specific, the other commissioners, or is it for anyone?
Yeah, the other commissioners do it. Amy Wilson, the solicitor, did it. They did that. I stay at $62 a night, and I don't think it hurt my conference at all. You know, that's Amy Wilson, the solicitor. Dale, Bill didn't go. Bill didn't go. I apologize about that. That was Dale Pinkerton. He didn't go to the last conference.
Is this a recent conference?
Yeah, it probably was. Some of those went through ahead of time. I never got Dale's. I never got Dale's conference travel voucher. I'm required to give them mine, but they're not required to give me theirs. They just go and they bypass me. But I did look it up. I was wrong about the other two. I disallowed it this time. I realize the other twos went back at another meeting, and the solicitors and the chief clerks went in another meeting, but Dale's never came through at all, which I didn't know. I find it amazing that I'm required to turn in travel requests for $62 a night, and they go at $185 or $200 a night, and they're not required to do it at all. I guess he didn't want me to know how much it would cost. I don't know what his motive was. You can ask him.
Commissioner McCarrion, how do you respond?
Well, I would respond to the fact that I didn't see a travel request for Commissioner Eckstein for the last county commissioner's convention either. And our travel policy permits us to stay at the convention hotel, and that's what was done. As he said, though, I did not go to the last CCAP convention, so to include me in that is incorrect, and she did pick me out of that.
Okay.
But when I go to a convention, I do stay at the convention hotel, and I've gone over that time to time again, but if he doesn't get it, you don't understand it.
She asked me whether I voted against him. I told her. I understand.
Thank you, commissioners, that's all.
Okay. Tom?
Thank you. Commissioner Eckstein, why did your assistant speak on your behalf during a public comment?
Because I'm strictly limited on time. You know, they came up with this policy that Sunny View is in great concern to me, so Peggy did that just to get more information out to the public since these two restrict my speaking time, so it just gave me an extra more time to talk about something I really care about.
So, to give you an extra three minutes?
Yeah, it gave me an extra three minutes.
Commissioner McCarrion, what's your response to the pending sale of Sunny View? The commissioner and other people keep saying this is an attack by the county against the elderly.
Well, this is a completely false. Yeah, as I mentioned before, I believe 12 or 13 nursing homes in Butler County, and I believe that they provide excellent care to the residents. And some of the comments that were made, well, they don't have as many Medicaid residents. I talked to the investigator of one of the biggest nursing homes in Butler County, and they have a higher rate of Medicaid residents than we do.
And what's your response to him? The commissioner has more than once blamed the 2004 action by the then-retirement board for the deficit at Sunny View.
Well, I'd have to remind him that the people, the employees at Sunny View that were hired between 2000, or were hired before 2010 are beneficiaries of that pension. And I don't know if I would have voted for it. I wasn't here at the time, and I didn't have all the facts and figures that the board at that time and the controller and the treasurer had, so I can't criticize them or I can't condemn them or applaud them for doing what they did. They had the facts and the figures, and I'm sure they thought they were acting in the best interest of the county. But the important point is that it did benefit all the employees, not just the county commissioners and the treasurer and the controller. It benefited all the employees at Sunny View Home who were hired before 2010, I believe when it was retracted.
Does the controller, who was on the board at the time, have any response to the commissioner calling it a pension grab and blaming Sunny View's deficit on that action?
The fact point otherwise. The quoted percentage that was, I heard a moment ago, 20% isn't even close to being accurate. The portion of the total unfunded liability makes up only 5% of the employee's salary, and the case Sunny View, that calculates to be around $600,000. There's been a number of misstatements made about the pension fund in general and the consequences if the nursing home is sold. We have a pension fund that is a standard of excellence across the state. As I speak today, it is nearly 85% funded. Any liability, any portion of a Sunny View employee's pension that is not completely funded has been addressed by, I believe, Commissioner McCarrion, who says that the proceeds of the sale will go to offset that liability, even though, under actuarial standards, we can amortize that over a period of 12 years. He's committed, I believe Commissioner Pinkerton, and that goes to similar sentiments that whatever that unfunded liability is, and I don't believe when we get an actuarial study back, it's going to be significant in terms to a pension fund that today stands at $170 million.
Thank you, Controller. Yeah, Commissioner?
I'd like to say this. I got that 20% figure from Bill Keppel. There might be a misunderstanding. I got it from Bill Keppel how much at Sunny View, so if there is a mistake here, maybe it's a misunderstanding, but I didn't pull a rabbit out of the hat there. I got that with a conversation with Bill Keppel in person, so there's no mistake there. And Jack just said that the $600,000 per year liability was due to the pension increase in 2004. Well, we've only lost on average $400,000 a year, so he agrees with me that what's causing the losses is the pension fund. He just agreed with me right now. We've only had a $400,000 loss per year for the last 10 years, and he just stated it was $600,000. That's what I heard. You know, he says it can be attributed to the art. Okay?
Commissioner McCarrion, what would you attribute Sunny View's deficit for?
Well, I can't attribute it to any one thing. It's just very difficult for county-owned homes to break even, as we see across the state of Pennsylvania. At one time, there were over 54 homes, and now we're down to around 20, and many of those are for sale. In the last month, we're three of them sold, Beaver, Montgomery, and Bloom Center.
Thank you. Commissioner Eckstein, one last question. The signs on your truck, would you characterize them as a tax on your fellow colleagues?
No, I wouldn't characterize them as an attack. I think it's my right of freedom of speech. If the other two commissioners, those are correct, those signs, in my opinion. Those signs are accurate and correct, and it's my right of free speech to put those signs on my truck. Dale Pinkerton put a "Pinkerton for Commissioner" sign when he ran and said how great he was. Now, I should be able to put a sign on my truck. I saw it lots of times. "Pinkerton for Commissioner," he's a great guy. I'm putting that online. Should we limit freedom of speech because those guys don't like it? I say not. Let them, you know.
So, you're saying?
I say we shouldn't limit it.
So, you're saying the difference is what they say about you is false, but what you say about them is true?
No, I say we all have the right. I say I have the right of free speech. That's what I'm saying. I can't even imagine bothers them because I'm promoting the fact what they're doing, discriminating against the elderly. How could you be not like that? That's what they're doing. They've picked the elderly to take away the money from. That's an accurate statement. I'll stand by what, you know, I say on the truck.
That's all I have, unless the other two commissioners have a response.
You know, when I was in third and fourth grade, there used to be kids that called me Dale Pill, the Water Wheel, or Dale Evans, who was married to Roy Rogers, that kind of thing. That's what he reminds me of. I feel like I'm really back in third grade with Jim. He just doesn't seem to get the point. You know, people can say, we got elected, okay, and we did get elected, and then people say, well, only 24% of the people voted. Well, the 24% of the people that voted voted for Bill and I to a great degree, and we got the most votes, and we're doing what we feel is right for Sunny View in the long run. On January 1st, Sunny View's expenses go up almost $400,000 with the 3% increase in the new hospitalization. That takes them another half a million, almost a half a million dollars in expenses, and in the next five years, Sunny View would be losing probably somewhere between $3 and $4 million, maybe as much as $5 million a year, and we're thinking about our taxpayers. And an independent company, and all we're doing is changing the name up there. Everyone's grandfathered in, every patient that's there, 70% of them are going to have to stay Medicare for the next 10 years. We have taken care of them, and most of the employees, I honestly believe, will have their jobs. So, we really are just changing the name and taking the nursing home out of the county's possession because it just, we're not mandated to do it, and that's what we need to do.
I have no comment in that, Tom. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Wait a minute, we are adjourned. We are adjourned.
No, we're not adjourned. What's the matter with you? We're not adjourned.
Okay, we changed the format, okay?
Okay. Tom said he was done, except he had a question for Dale and I, and I don't have any response. Dale responded, so we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
We changed the format. I apologize.